I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and thankful to this flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, I do call this meeting to order. We do have proof of posting in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Papers Amendment Notice of Texas Open Meetings Act. Any members of the public who wish to speak shall each have five minutes. Yes, sir. You're here for the...
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen for Southern Oaks.
Oh, okay.
We'll wait till then if that's all right. Okay. If there is no public that wishes to speak, we will go to item number one to approve the minutes of October sixth and eleventh meetings.
On number four, the second set, the...
Second set?
Table that was canceled down the street in the city. We need to put that back on the table because our pickings will be up here.
It's on here for number thirteen for today.
It's here. And I don't know if we get anything done today when you put it on the next one, please.
Make a vote to set the minutes, my code six and October eleventh.
All in favor, aye. Motion carried. Item number two, budget transfers and amendments. This is a long list, I know that, but most of these are just making adjustments for year end after we've gotten, hopefully, all of the expenses in and needed to make little adjustments to...
And the payroll accruals. We had the last payroll in October, but we actually, nine days of it or so was in September, so that's the reason for the payroll accruals. We had to...
To show part of it and then have a part of it in the next year.
Make a vote for both of them, kind of for the gentleman.
Sir.
All in favor, aye. Motion carried. Item number two is to approve the pay per deals.
Make a two saves?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay. Can't find them back.
Thirteen pages.
Do the fire departments request to get their money or do they, or do you also give it after the new store, New Year's stores? How does that work? I don't, I'm not...
Oh, I mean, y'all, they're still calling y'all and...
No, no, no. I mean their $10,000.
Oh, yes. They started putting in for that. They bring their expenses.
Into the healthcare, that's on page twenty-five, the last one. We paid $20,869.25 for an individual person?
Yes. It was actually a $70,000 bill and we paid the indigent rates, which were twenty something.
Any other discussion on bills?
Make a motion for the payroll.
All in favor, aye. Motion carried. Item number four is payroll.
Some of the admin time in the jail are...
The chief is back there. He can tell us.
Yes, ma'am. Please answer your question.
I'm sorry?
Did you have a question for me?
Yes.
The admin time in the jail.
That's for the jailer that has COVID.
Sir.
I think you were saying about the admin time, that for the, for the jailer that has COVID.
And then one of them got admin separated.
Which one?
Jordan Davis. Who is it?
Jordan Davis.
And on that COVID, you know, we have a policy that, that went along with what the government had said before, up to a certain number of hours. So even now, if people have not, had not used up that time, then we get credit for that, pay them for that. Is that above and beyond?
So normally on the timesheet, if they acknowledged to me on the timesheet that it's COVID, we track it as COVID. Sometimes if it's in that grace period of they've been exposed, but they haven't went and got tested yet, then they lock it as admin time because it doesn't fall under our policy yet, if they want to give them that time. There is a new Senate bill, I think the number is twenty-two, and a House bill that goes with it, and it deals with law enforcement and that you can't dock their time if...
For, for what?
For COVID.
Okay.
So, you know, we're in the part of, of getting that kind of looked at too and so... But this time right here is not considered COVID. This was admin time. It is COVID related, but they were given admin time.
So if they had any hours left on that eighty hours balance was...
We would have used that first, except for like if they were in that transition period between, they hadn't hit the COVID policy because they hadn't got tested.
Sir.
But they didn't have sick time. Like it took sick time for that amount of time?
What's that Senate bill? Now, on that new Senate bill, the Senate bill is twenty-two. I can't remember what the House bill numbers are. But it does say that, you know, you can't deduct their time from them if they contracted it at work.
Okay. But it didn't say that you couldn't use the sick time or what is it?
You can't use their, you can't take any of their vacation or sick time if they contracted it at work.
Okay. If they, if they, that's, that's the question, if they contracted it at work.
Yes. In TAC is told us it's like supposed to be filed under workman's comp and let them decide.
I think that's what we had been talking about before is how do you determine if it was contracted at work.
Yeah, that's what TAC is saying. Let workman's comp decide that.
Now, if they did, if they did, if they believe that they did get COVID at work, did you say you can't use workers' comp? That's what we were talking about, I think. You can if you know that you got it at work.
Correct. But you can't deduct their time from them like vacation and sick if they contracted it at work.
But they could, they could use workers' comp.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to straighten my mind. I knew we...
And they'll pay us. We'll continue to pay them?
Right, yeah.
If they, if the gesture looks at it and says they believe that it was contracted at work, then...
Yeah. County gets reimbursed for some of that, if in fact that's it. Now, how they determine that, I'm not sure, but nonetheless, that's what it is. All right. Any other discussion? On the payroll?
Make a motion for the payroll.
All in favor, aye?
We did, ma'am.
Any opposed?
I didn't hear you.
Now, I guess really the only difference is maybe we can get some workers' comp money back if we can, can show that. Item number five is reports. I have a September report from the district clerk, a report from the extension agent for activities they were planning to file in September and for, no, I'm sorry, that they had for September, and also saying what the plans are for October. Senior services report for October, September. There were fluctuations in total deal served during each month, and that depends on several factors. The amount of days in operation during the month, clients leaving or coming off of these programs, and I know they did, they were closed for a little week because of COVID during, during that time. Once we pass this, we just sign that. It had to be re-signed. It's just something we've already done. All right. County clerk's office for September. Did you pass that over? Should be to, yeah. Motion, the investment reports showing the interest that was earned on the monies that were in various institutions. Sign this and then hand it back to county clerk's office. Yes. You know, after the collections in, at the end of the year that will be coming in, those will be funds that will be put in CDs for a certain length of time, and then we cash those in as we leave them during the year. Anybody else have a report? Oh, I do right here. Unfunded liability quarterly report shows the, at the end of the quarter, September the third, the sick time value, vacation value, comp time value, holiday time value, all that is a liability at the end of the month. Any other reports?
Did you do the interest already? Did I miss it? Or you did the interest?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I'll read all those out, so when I hand them to you, they'll all be on your minutes, but... All right. Anyone else have a report? I guess the tax office is getting busy yet. Are they already?
Yes.
Woo! All right. We have a motion to accept the reports.
Make that motion, second.
All in favor, aye? Item number six, burn ban.
I think we need to leave it on.
I've certainly had a ton of people calling, even this morning wanting to know what, what is the, what is, like it up in your area?
Well, the longer the burn ban stays on, the more piles of controlled burns that you have, and when it's taken off, you have a, a big rash of burns. So, I mean, I'm not really sure either way, but it seems to me like if you, if you take it off for a short time, people will go ahead and burn some of the piles they have. And where if you leave it on a real long time, you have a whole lot of piles and, I mean, you'd be surprised at the people that come down on a weekend and Sunday four o'clock, they'll light a fire and I'm going home. But it just seems to me if you, if you just have it off for short periods, it, it, it won't let as many piles, you know, accumulate. So, but I mean, it's, you know, six of, six of one, half dozen of the other. But for us, I think it's probably easier if you have a short period where it's off and some of that gets burned down and still accumulating so much, but...
We'll meet in a week and a half. We're gonna meet on seconds to the third, on Tuesday. I say we take it off.
And then look at it with the next one.
We'll put it back on.
Makes sense. We have a motion to take off, to cancel the burn ban.
I'm ready. I'll sit.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. People will be happy. Yeah, we, we've had more calls, I think, this time than we, than we normally do. Item number seven, special road use agreements, contracts and permits. Okay, chief, will you relay the message to the sheriff's department that the burn ban is off?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. No. Do we have any special road use agreements?
No, we haven't.
None. All right, then we will go to item number eight, bonds and education certificates. We do have some education certificates for county clerk's office, Melissa Santana. This is for the cybersecurity awareness training program for twenty-one and twenty-two, and then for Alicia Davis for twenty-one and twenty-two. The Vern Moore, twenty-one, twenty-two. Melinda Carr, twenty-one and twenty-two. Annie Richardson, twenty-one and twenty-two. Goodness, we're all cyber security trained in the county clerk's office. Thank y'all. Do we have any other certificates? Not, do we have a motion to accept these?
Make a motion, second.
All in favor, aye? No other bonds, county officials' bonds, right? Okay. Then let's go to number nine. Contract and agreement signed between Freestone County and the T. Public Library. And the basis, the basic thing about this is they agree to provide the services to county residents in, in return for the funds that we have in the budget for them each year.
Make a motion, second.
All in favor, aye? Item number ten is for the agreement between Freestone County and the Fairfield Library Association, and it is the same, same type of contract.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye? We appreciate what the libraries do. They really do a good job in our county, I believe. Item number eleven, transfer the second floor copy machine to the treasury. We have a new copy machine in the, over in the copy room here. And so this, the one that was up here, I think it doesn't, it, it still runs, but it doesn't have any maintenance and they can't get parts for it. But as long as it lasts, she's gonna, she's gonna wanna use it. So do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, aye? Motion carried. Item number twelve, are we ready on the resolution allowing Kevin Tate to relocate the fence and vacate the road?
I think we have the information. We're not ready for commissioners' court yet, but it sounds like we're gonna be good to go next commissioners' court.
I'll leave that on the next meeting table.
Is that a motion to table that?
Motion to table.
Perfect. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, aye? Motion carried. Now, number thirteen, resolution canceling and abandoning Savage Street.
Make a motion to table that.
All in favor, aye?
And put it on the next agenda.
Aye. Thank you. All in favor, aye? I asked already, motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss mandate for the mental health leave policy for these officers. I believe you're just gonna talk just about that a little bit. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. It's just new law that every county has to put in place, or really anybody with, with officers that are employed. Essentially what it is, if somebody's involved in a traumatic event, they're granted leave time. That's the simplest version of it, and there's different ways, you know, prove that's a traumatic event, and then they get so much time off, and then they want an extension on that time off. They have a doctor's note talking about why they would need additional time. And the form positive that I've seen, we're talking about officer-involved shootings, casualty events, things like that as being a traumatic event. But again, it's been put in place. I know it's been going around email chains and different things like that. Sheriff and I have been looking at it. I don't think we're done with it quite yet. But again, we have some good things to go off of. So if we can, my position is to table that. Until next time again, keep that on the docket as we go.
All right. Thanks for the update on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to table.
Make that motion, second.
All in favor, aye? Motion carried. All right. Item number fifteen is indigent healthcare mandated providers. Ginny, you wanna explain kind of what that is?
Yes, so on our indigent program, we go out for a contract with providers who agree to accept the indigent rate. And these, I gave them to October first to respond back to me if they wished to be a mandated provider this year. And so the list that you have is who responded back to me and said they wished to be a mandated provider. I did send it out to everyone that's been there before and who you requested extra on there.
And they agree, like you said, to accept the Medicare rate if...
Yes.
And if we don't have an agreement with them, well then we would have to pay the full charge.
Well, they just have to get our approval. If we don't have an agreement with them, they have to get our approval. So if they still don't accept the rate, we still don't do business with them because that's all we can pay on a indigent is the, that rate. So...
I said that wrong.
No, that's okay.
Clear that up for me. Okay. I think each of you have a copy of it. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we have hometown pharmacy, Freestone Medical Center, Freestone Health Center, Heartview Medical Clinic in T.
And if someone does get the contract back to us, we still will accept it and put them on there. This is just, this is what I got.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Do we need a motion to accept those or approve those?
Approved this list.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Motion carried. Now, item number sixteen is Southern Oaks volunteer fire department. Mr. Banley.
Hi, I'm Chief of Southern Oaks, Van Lagen. Eight years and nine months ago, we put in a grant for a large brush truck and missed it by a little bit the last three years. I finally got an approval letter that said we're gonna get the grant. It's for a large brush truck. It's gonna replace a deuce and a half army truck we have that's nearly forty years old and starting to spend a lot of money on it. So what we're asking for is that the forest service gives $220,000 for a large brush truck if it's water-only. We're asking for a unit with calves, which is compressed air foam. It'll, it'll put out 12,000 gallons of foam where our engine puts out 1,000 gallons. So we, we will take this to a, I mainly want the bigger truck to really be quick attack on a house fire. When our engine gets there, we have 1,000 gallons of water, we have two inch and a half preconnect hoses, and once we start spraying, we're out of water in probably eight to nine minutes. And if our tanker comes behind us and hooks up, we get another eight or nine minutes before we're out. And that's putting out 1,000 gallons of water. This truck has a monitor on the bumper with a joystick. It'll put out 12,000 gallons of foam. If we had had it last year, we could have saved a structure fire on Mopani. When we got there, the garage was fully engulfed. We put all the water we had on it. We hooked up the tanker, used that water. We still couldn't put the garage out. we hooked up the tanker, used that water, we still couldn't put the garage out, so the house burned before the other departments got there. Had we had this large brush truck with 12,000 gallons of foam, we could have saved the house. But what the forest service does, like I say, they give you $220,000 if it's water only. We're asking, we want calves, which will be $238. And what we're respectfully asking is if the county would do the 10% match so we can get the truck, which would be $23,800. The truck will be valued at about $285,000 to $290,000. The Southern Oaks itself will be putting up between 20,000 and 30,000 of their own money. But this truck will last us 15 to 20 years, and it'll be the crown jewel of our department, and it will double our capabilities on quick attack for structure fires. And I've got a copy of the approval letter.
All right, you may need to give that to Karen, the auditor.
On the original letter, it has $220,000, but we're asking for calves, so the forest service will give up to $238,000, and then there's a 10% match. Thank you very much.
We may have to transfer a little money to that grant match. Is it 20 or give that out for this year?
Yes, that's what...
Okay. When will you need this?
I'll have to find out.
Hopefully it's not the eight years I get one's gonna need.
We're still getting bids from people. I would say we probably wouldn't be letting a bid out for three to four weeks. And but once we let it out, to my knowledge, we have to go ahead and pay upfront. It's a minimum of one year delivery time, so we won't be getting it for a year once we pay for it.
All right. All right, so we'll need to have an amendment on the next agenda to put the match in there, and then you'll be able to tell us how we're gonna structure that. Probably pay it out either of that surplus money that we budgeted, because then we'll get those funds back. But we'll pay it now, you may not get it for a year, the truck.
Yes, we pay upfront, and it takes about a year for delivery, because they custom build it.
And that's when, that's when the insurance, I mean, when the forestry service will reimburse the money at that time? I'm just trying to think budget-wise how this...
Yeah, I'll have to find out.
Yeah, talk to Karen about it, so we'll be sure how to set that up then. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, second.
All right, we'll come back with the details at the next meeting about the transfer of the funds and exactly how that's gonna work budget-wise. Okay, all right, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? None, motion carried. All right, and you take those not only to fires within your area, but to other?
Yeah, yeah, we do mutual aid with Fairfield Streetman and anybody that calls us. And we accept mutual aid. Most house fires, we have five departments there, Teague, Kirby, Worthing, Fairfield, Streetman. Everybody's going to a structure, but we always get there first. So we always run out of water before the other people get there.
Well, it's a wonderful service.
Oh, it will, it will double our quick attack capabilities.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all for what y'all do up there, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all for helping us.
Item number 17 is to award and dispose of items in the storage building. All right, we did go out for bids, we did not get any. So the next step would be to dispose of the ones, of everything that's there. And the motion would be pursuant to local government code 263.152, commissioners' court orders the items offered for sale to be disposed of as worthless to the county and approves the items to be taken, to be disposed of... Yeah, and approves the items to be disposed of. Approves to dispose of the items, so it won't be, so it'll be a proper sentence, okay. Now, the items were offered for sale by competitive bids required by local government code 263.152A1, but no bids were received, and that's, that's the motion.
I'll make that motion, I have a comment to make. I did get confirmation that...
Now, the comment is not part of the motion.
Right.
We got confusion on that one once before, okay.
Just before we go all the way through with this motion, there are some, the city of Streetman and the Streetman Fire Department are interested in some of the items
Yes.
and would bid on the remaining items after October the 29th. I have a company that's gonna be here to pick up...
To pick up.
All of the computer phones.
Yes.
Wiring, monitors, copy machines, fax machines.
Streetman came and looked at it, but there was so much, and they didn't want but a few things. So we had told them and any other nonprofit or, you know, our department or whoever, if they would want any of that, it would be great to take it. And I told them that we would call Streetman, and they could come back and... What, the items that are there, most of them are broken, they don't work anymore, it's old desks, old computers, we have taken the hard drives out, it's my understanding. And so now we just need to get them out of the building, right Sheriff?
Please.
It's at the storage building, the records building, records building. I was gonna call it a storage building, but it's the records building, it's all in the sheriff's section in the front. So we're trying to get that all cleaned out. And after this, we're gonna have to have a big discussion about when people have things that are not working, where we're gonna put those until we can dispose of them. But we have to offer them for sale first, and then if nobody bids on it, then we can dispose of them. Anybody need a computer that won't work for their office or whatever? But we do, and I appreciate Lloyd checking into that, we do have some of that, some people that would come and pick up some of that old stuff that's left that, that nobody will take. All right.
And any other county offices that have copy machines or computers that they are gonna get rid of? Now's a good time for us to get rid of it, no charge. This would typically be charged more, but we had such a large amount, this company's coming out of Fort Worth at no cost to the county, so anything that we have should be there before then.
So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye? Motion carried. Item number 18 is to reschedule the November 3rd commissioners' court meeting.
Make that motion.
And we're moving it to the second, the day before, because there is a conference that the commissioners' court will hold on the 3rd. So we will move it to November 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Motion carried. All right, any comments from commissioners' court members?
Make a motion with your own.
Second.
All in favor, aye?